I'm Undergadon in Invisso, a liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, first being comments by mayor, and I'll be very brief because we have a, this is always a fun evening. This is our changing of the guard meeting where we have the old alderman going out and the new alderman coming in. So we're gonna have a lot of comments later on here before they depart and the new folks come in, so I'll refrain until that point in time. So, the next order of business is comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm actually gonna ask our chief of police, Joe Berger, to please come forward along with this handsome-looking man next to him.
He looks much better in a suit.
He does. It's unusual in a suit. I've never seen him like that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's my honor to be here tonight to recognize Deputy Chief Dave Field for his more than thirty-one years of service to the city of Lake Forest. Dave was hired in October of nineteen seventy-nine, and since that time has been providing exceptional service to the residents of Lake Forest. Dave has had many firsts in his career, and I would like to highlight just a couple of them. When the police departments in Lake County first formed a joint SWAT team, Dave tried out for the team and was chosen as the representative, the first representative from the Lake Forest Police Department. As part of the SWAT team, Dave attended some extra training and was involved in some very high-profile cases, including the Lori Dan murders in Glencoe. And another first, when Dave was first, Dave was chosen as the police department's first representative on the undercover drug investigation unit, also formed by the Lake Forest, or the Lake County Police Departments. Dave was also my field training officer when I first started twenty-four years ago. I couldn't have asked for a better FTO when I started. Dave, through his patient teaching and mentoring, helped me and many other Lake Forest officers become the best officers we could be. He held me to a high standard all through my career, and I like to think that one of the reasons I am where I am today is because of the great initial instruction and orientation to the department that I received from Dave. During his career, Dave has received numerous letters of thanks from residents and other police departments. Additionally, he's received two department honorable mentions, a department commendation, and a life-saving award. In closing, I will miss Dave's infectious laugh and his ability to see the bright side of even the most difficult circumstances. I consider Dave not just my deputy chief, but my friend, and I had the privilege and honor of serving with one of the finest Lake Forest police officers I've ever known. In closing, I'd like to congratulate Dave on thirty-one years of service.
Wait a minute, don't, don't step down there.
Don't go away yet.
Don't go away. The council has to read a resolution.
Do we get the before and after pictures?
But before, but before, yeah, that's right. But we do have before and after pictures. Susan, can you please put that up there? He's not quite as seedy as some of the ones that we saw last time, but...
That's not the one when I got arrested.
No, that's right. We didn't want to show that one. Mayor Cowie, I think you have a resolution?
I do, and I'd be honored to read it this evening. Whereas David E. Field has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since October sixteen nineteen seventy-nine, and whereas David E. Field will honorably retire from the city on May sixth two thousand eleven, and whereas Dave Field served in the following positions during his dedicated career. Police officer, October nineteen seventy-nine; field training officer, May nineteen eighty-seven; investigator, LCMEG agent, January nineteen eighty-nine; promoted to sergeant, November nineteen ninety-two; promoted to commander, December nineteen ninety-four; promoted to deputy chief, March four two thousand three. Whereas David Field received the following awards: department commendation on March twenty-eighth of nineteen ninety-two; honorable mention, March nineteen ninety-four; life-saving, March nineteen ninety-four; honorable mention, January twenty-seventh two thousand. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Dave Field for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Dave Field this day, May second two thousand and eleven. Congratulations, Dave.
Congratulations. One other quick item, Karina, can you put the item on the overhead? I think a lot of residents have recently gotten mail, some of us might call it junk mail, about how you can change your electric service now. There's options other than Commonwealth Edison. In anticipation of a lot of questions that people might have, we are going to have on the committee of the whole meeting of June sixth, a discussion before the city council of various options, because not only is there an option for individual homeowners to go out and shop around for other electric carriers, but also there is an opportunity for the city council to, by referendum, aggregate the purchase of electric service within the community, and then residents can pick and choose whether they want to go with whoever the low bidder is, if you will, for the city of Lake Forest. And so those are some of the things that we'll be chatting about at the June sixth meeting. So, if you've gotten the mail and you've wondered what to do with it, and you didn't just throw it in the circular file, hopefully we'll be able to answer some of your questions on June sixth.
The only comment I would make is comments prices will reset in two weeks and they will go lower, so don't do anything now, wait until the prices reset on, for the auction.
Thank you.
And interesting, I also saw that some of the correspondence was with, for Constellation, which they've just made an offer to buy, to purchase, so, not coincidental.
That's right. There's a lot of movement in the industry.
Yes, a lot of consolation.
And that completes my report this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members. Any comments? Not at this time. The next item on the agenda is council committee reports, the first being the finance committee report presented by chairman alderman David Grumhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the agenda, on the agenda is approval of the comprehensive fiscal plan for fiscal year two thousand and twelve. We have obviously spent a lot of time on this budget and this plan over the last twelve months, particularly in the last six. The proposed, everyone got a copy of the nice big book. I'm sure you've all read it in great detail. You know, the budget, as we've talked about in the past, we've worked hard on, I think we, you know, led by Kathy Reinertson, we've done a great job in a tough economy to put together a budget that will, you know, put us in the black for this year and for the years to come. And Kathy and Bob and the rest of the staff get a lot of credit for that, and, you know, I think we should all be proud about where the budget stands, because we're in a lot better shape than most people around us. So, I'm happy to take any questions, if anyone had any, if not, we could take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Grumhouse, Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer. AKA's known as, motion carries.
Second item on the finance agenda is approval of the fiscal year two thousand and twelve personnel policies, practices, and official pay plan. Yeshay, are you gonna stand up and give us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, changes in the personnel policies this year are very light. They're all on page eleven and have to do with changing the old auto allowance to managerial comp language that the council actually approved several months ago. So, all the other, there are no other changes to policies, they all remain the same.
Thank you. Any questions? Take a motion for approval of that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer. AKA's known as, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. And last item is consideration of an ordinance approving an ambulance fee schedule for the city of Lake Forest. We've obviously discussed this at the last two meetings. I know Chief Howell is here, I don't know if, if we have any questions on this. We obviously took it on first reading last time. Any questions? If not, we could take a motion for final approval.
Motion to approve, since there's no changes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer. AKA's known as, motion carries.
Thank you, and that'll do it for finance. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Grumhouse. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Housing Trust. Alderman Marsh.
As we just discussed at the committee of the whole meeting, as well as at the last city council meeting, the Housing Trust has brought forth a recommendation to city council for approval and agreement with community partners for affordable housing, which is a not-for-profit agency authorizing a pilot program to acquire and prove and to exist, and sell two existing homes in Lake Forest as affordable units. At the last meeting, we had a full presentation and a full set of documentation from, that was presented. That agreement was then redrafted by Vic Philippini, and what he is recommending is that we approve that tonight in substantially the form that it exists, with a few outstanding things to be finally done. I've asked Vic to come up with a resolution accommodating, or incorporating some of the comments that were made at the committee of the whole. If you could read that resolution, that would be great.
Certainly. I would note, just for clarification and point that may not have been clear from the discussion at the committee of the whole, that when we talk about our affordable housing policy, it addresses not only income criteria consistent with the Affordable Housing Act and the HUD standards, but we also have within our affordable housing policy certain Lake Forest preferences, if you will, as criteria for those prospective residences, residents, so that when a dwelling becomes available, the threshing of who gets actual choice at selecting those residents will be first those that have clear Lake Forest connections before they would ever devolve to anyone else. And it's in that context that I'll offer this motion for the council's consideration. It would be a motion to approve in substantially the form attached, the grant agreement between the city of Lake Forest and the community partners for affordable housing, subject to the additional language in section thirteen D, to construe the agreement in the context of the city ordinances, including the city's affordable housing policy, and two, final approval by the city manager based on consultation with the Housing Trust Fund Board and the city attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Tom, do you want to take public comment? Because we did.
Yeah, related to, I'm sorry.
Just because we did.
Yeah, I apologize about that. Yes, we discussed this, I think, in quite a bit of detail at the committee of whole, and if there are any public wish to comment on this, please come forward at this point. Sorry, overlooked you at the committee meeting of the whole, and you wanted an opportunity to speak. Yes, please do. Thanks, David.
My name's Gary James. I'm a twenty-year resident here of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, and I have served as the minister of the North Shore Unitarian Church for twenty years. I learned of this proposal only recently from Ann Bathy. She's a member of our congregation, and I just want to commend the city council to consider this seriously. Having grown up here and being a minister, I'm quite aware of the difficulties of somebody of a relatively modest income living in Lake Forest. I have many friends who are faculty at Lake Forest College, teachers, other people, and I know that in the history of Lake Forest, there was a commitment to creating a city in which the persons who were working as clerks and, and other capacities in the city found housing stock in the city so that they could become a part of the community. And I think this is what makes authentic community, as opposed to the email that I think I sent to all of you today indicated what's characteristic of a growing emergence of gated communities are highly homogeneous. I don't want to live in the Lake Forest that is a homogeneous community and designs itself along the lines of gated communities elsewhere. We do need to make housing stock available for people of relatively modest income, particularly people moving into the retirement. This is what allows people to have continued relationships with the people that are part of the community, and I just want to commend to you the opportunity to take a very modest step in this regard. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Victor. I've been a ten-year resident of Lake Forest in the Fourth Ward, and I'm here to also say, yes, I approve of this pilot program. I think it's wonderful that we're going after, not trying to reinvent the wheel, like what was trying to be done at Sunset, but instead going off of a successful program. I would like to second some of the concerns that were voiced earlier about the document that you've got going. It sounds like there are some holes in it, and as a real estate investor and landlord in limited income communities just north of here, I think any real estate document does need, have to have all the i's and i's dotted, t's crossed. And as for, so that's one of the concerns I have. Another one is that, you just mentioned that they would have, they would be vetted or screened to have some Lake Forest criteria met, and what would that be? That would not violate fair housing laws.
Kathy, I think you have some language, too.
The city's housing... Can you hear me? I think it is. The city recently re-adopted an updated affordable housing policy, and that policy states that the targeted groups are seniors, senior Lake Forest residents living on fixed incomes, residents with disabilities, persons employed in the city but financially unable to live in the city, single-parent families, and young families. So, Lake Forest residents are targeted, along with employees who work at local institutions.
And is there a time limit on that employment? For instance, if I just got a job at McDonald's, would I have to, you know, be employed for three years in Lake Forest, or could I exercise that opportunity immediately?
The Housing Trust has worked very closely with local institutions, Lake Forest Hospital, Lake Forest College, the school district, Lake Forest Academy, and the city. So that really has been the focus of the employee housing. That's been the target. There hasn't been a time limit discussed.
Okay, that should probably be included somewhere, so someone doesn't throw a dart at that. And then there was also a mention of affordable housing, those, those homes meeting building ordinances, and I think that, well, that's an obvious one. They will, anyone in Lake Forest, you know, knows they have to meet requirements for upkeep of your property, but let's not throw the stone so far, when off of McKinley, there's many, and fortunately, one has been torn down that are eyesore. So we should, you know, first go after those landlords as well, if we're gonna start looking at affordable housing with a close eye, and how those properties are maintained, et cetera. So I am completely on this program. I think, starting with two properties, some people have said it's not done, we should do more. Let's start with baby steps, get the documents right, get the screening and vetting right, and be successful from the start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Skip Thompson on Arcady Drive. To the same comment, let's get the documents right, let's make sure that we understand everything in them. We've talked about this a lot over the last couple of years. I think the only thing that I've heard that concerns me and other residents that have spoken to me is the need to move quickly to acquire a house. And it's conceivable that a house could get picked, as I understand it, and maybe Mr. Philippini can correct me, or Mr. Kylie, and that we have allowed Mr. Anthony's group to go forward to acquire the house. Is there enough notification to surrounding neighbors that this particular home is now going to be targeted as an affordable spot? I don't know that question. And I'm not asking you to, to correct that tonight, but maybe that's something we need to think about. I think the residents can't wake up the next morning and find out a house next door to them, no matter how poor disrepair it might be, is now in this program. It may be great that it is in the program, but I think there's gotta be some notification involved. Thank you.
I spoke at the finance committee meeting. I only have one recommendation and a suggestion. I heard about the, the form that was sent around for, what do you call those? The, to agree whether you want it or not. See, this is how old I am, I can't even remember. But why can't we send out a form to all the people in Lake Forest and let them vote on this, affordable housing? They're the ones that are gonna be living with it. You're all gonna be off of there within five years, for sure, but we're gonna be with it for the rest of our lives, me and my kids and my neighbors. And I would like to see something go on to everybody and see if that's what they want. We're taking the word of just a few people. My suggestion, again.
Thank you.
I'm Michael Burns, I'm chairman of the Housing Trust, and I just want to say very, very quickly, I noticed there was no section for, or area for public comment on here tonight, and my comments really aren't as much related to this, and I also noted that you have a very long agenda for what's supposed to be a quick meeting, traditionally. So I did want to take the opportunity to thank Alderman Grumhouse and Woodman and Alderman Luby for their previous support for all our efforts. Thank you.
Vic, do you have any other comments here relative to, I mean, the procedure is that you're recommending here is this would be approved by the Housing Trust, also the city manager and the city attorney have to approve of all the documents.
That's correct. This would be the, the council's final action on it, subject to the clarifications that were discussed at the committee of the whole meeting on those various points, which would be vetted through the Housing Trust Fund Board, and with recommendations from us ultimately, the city attorney, or the city manager to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. We have a roll call vote, or a voice vote?
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Present.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer. AKA's known as, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven, seven, one, present. If I can, if I can make a comment, I really appreciate the support of the city council on this. As you know, we have been working diligently for a number of years. I think it may have been a brave move by some, and I appreciate your bravery, I appreciate your foresight, and I appreciate your commitment to the residents of Lake Forest. Deeply from my heart, I thank you, and we will move forward, and we will get it right, Don. Thank you for your comments, thank you for your vote as well. We will get it right, because if we, as I think a couple of you said, if we don't get it right, we won't be doing it very much more. So we want to do it some more, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Marsh. You have one more item on your topic here, Laurel and Western Avenue Redevelopment Committee.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Marsh. Our next committee is legal committee, Alderman Palmer.
I actually have a report tonight. We don't meet that often. We tend to meet quarterly, and not even that if there's nothing to, to talk about. We had a number of items we discussed at the meeting we had on Thursday, April twenty-eighth. The first was, we discussed neighbor-to-neighbor disputes and whether we should get involved with some sort of way to resolve them administratively. It was the opinion of the legal committee that this really isn't our bailiwick. The city isn't a referee or a super parent. If we have ordinances that are being violated, we will respond to that, but after that, it's really not, and, you know, we've cut back in the size of our staff, and you really can't look to the city to be doing this. So if there's a problem and you have a legal right of action, the courts are designed to, to work this through. Now, that is not a plug for my former profession as a trial lawyer, because I used to tell my clients when they started that, as Will Rogers said, the difference between a fistfight and a lawsuit was there are no hard feelings after a fistfight. So, anyway, we encourage everyone to try to work it out with their neighbors. We had a discussion about amending the ordinance about snow on city streets, not only to make it applicable to people that move the snow, but to the owners of the homes that hire them. And I believe at some point, this is gonna become before the council, it seemed to be a good idea. We reviewed our pending litigation, which right now is rather quiet. We had an update on the administrative, yeah, knock on wood. We had an update on the administrative hearing program, which is very popular and is paying its own way, and is getting more and more use. And then we reviewed our quarterly legal expenses, and we are way under budget, and that's the best news of all. So, that ends my report. There'll be a collection for Vic afterward.
Thank you, Alderman Palmer. Our next committee report is Public Works Committee. Alderman Luby.
Public Works has a number of things on the agenda tonight. As we all know, it's spring and construction time. We've received our bids on paving, the school lots, I think we discussed all these before. So I'm thinking that if we have looked them over and we're set, we probably could move ahead with just a vote if there's no questions on these.
I only have one question, and maybe you can answer it, John, and if you can, I'm sure Ramish can. You know, I looked at the engineering, the design and construction engineering, it's about twenty-five percent of the project budget. Has the world changed since I used to do this kind of work, or is it, is that how much engineers get out of a project these days? It looks a little hefty on the engineering side, Ramish.
No, on the, it includes, again, I think it's the phase one, phase two, which is also the surveying, so typically when you look at the surveying, so the surveying costs...
Usually part of construction.
All right, on the construction inspection, that's for both the projects.
Right.
So it's like around, yeah, the construction cost for the schools, like any typical, around ten to fifteen percent.
That'd be for designing and construction on a project like this, right?
Yeah, this one, right. Everything was in the house, right. That's why the total costs are so much, because some of the phase one, phase two costs are put in the phase three, because you gotta have inspector out. In this cost, one of the reasons why it was so high is it's such a tight timeframe, especially the Deerpath School, we gotta start the day after July fifth and get it done by August fifteenth. So, so pretty much, we're gonna have the contractor onsite every day, and then have basically oversight on like an hourly basis, and that's one of the reasons why one of those construction costs are high.
And John, I just had one question.
Sure.
As far as the part of this project that's being contributed by the TIF funding, is that it for the TIF funding will run out at this point, or is there any money left in that?
Actually, by, at the end of this year, because the prices here were so competitive, and also, you're gonna hear, I think, in another month about the final landscaping improvements that are gonna be done there, we could be sitting with between a quarter of a million and a half a million dollars left in the account at the end of the year.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna ask, and that would get to the next item on the agenda, if any of the cement replacement items could be used by that to offset some of that expense if it's located in the TIF area.
I don't know if we have any in the...
Possibly Wedgewood, or...
Yeah, that's, that's...
Not in the TIF.
Okay, I don't want to jump on the next agenda.
Maybe raising some of those underwater sidewalks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but just...
On the way to West Campus.
Good idea. We can take a look...
We can take a look.
Let me ask you one question on the lot. Obviously, you know, when we start July 5th, we still get a lot of use on our fields. Are we going to try and do the parking lot in phases? Is there just going to be no parking for the fields? Are we going to use the rec center? Mary, that may be more of a question for you, but...
Yeah, when we talked with them, we said because of such, again, such a tight timeframe, we were going to try to get it all done. This is, it's more of a just simple remove and replace, there's some improvements along with this plan, so we're trying to fit everything done in like, pretty much, seven weeks. So we're trying to have the lot completely to ourselves, and, but they can park on the, we're going to make some exceptions to park on the roadway, like in the, within the parking lot, and along on the front of the school. I know it's going to be a little bit longer walk, but we want to cordon off the construction zone, just to be on the safe side.
Okay. I mean, I'd just be cognizant of that, because those lots around sports times can get really busy.
Sounds like avoid the area.
Yeah, it will be. So with that, voice vote, if we have a motion.
Roll call, probably. I'll make a, I'll make a motion to recommend awarding the contracts for Deer Path number to All-Star Asphalt in the amount of $539,108,50.
Plus contingency.
Plus the...
Plus the contingency.
I'll second.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Whitman?
Present.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Louie?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, motion carries.
And we need one for the award of the Lake Forest share of the joint concrete street repairs and replacement program.
Motion to approve? Second.
Another roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Whitman?
Present.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Louie?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. And thank you, Alderman Louie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Senior Resource Commission, Alderman Novit.
And actually, no reports since last council meeting. Our next meeting of Senior Resource would be this coming Monday at eight in the morning, but nothing to report at this point.
Very good, thank you. Our next item is the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee. And I'll just make a real quick announcement that we're, we are, we made the first cut for the Federal Railroad Administration for funds for the West Side Train Station for pedestrian underpass, and we hope to be successful in our next round, and that would be a nice, a nice bonus for us, so. And also, Alderman Morris mentioned, I don't know if there's any other TIF funds that might be available from the West Side, maybe they could go towards this project as well, if there's anything left over. So that's all I have on the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee. Our next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. We have, what, three items on there? You take one, two, or three, all as you wish.
Looks like all three.
We have a motion to approve all three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Whitman?
Present.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder?
Aye.
Alderman Louie?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Now, I think we're, we don't have anything else with ordinance or new business, so we'll jump into the fun stuff here. Everything you've been waiting for now, the public out there, is the final words.
Do we need public comment?
I think we did the public comment, pretty much, with the housing. Is there any other public comment this evening? We do have a second meeting as well.
We have a second meeting.
You just don't want to leave.
You know.
We have final words for the departing Aldermen from the remaining council members, so I'll let the council members, or Bob, you want to...
If you don't mind, I'll go first, because I'm the one that's presenting the wonderful gifts and prizes here this evening. Let me say that this is always a difficult meeting, and it's even more difficult, because we have three Aldermen that are leaving. I was recently asked a question about what's the, one of the greatest misunderstandings about city management in Lake Forest, and I said that everybody thinks that the city manager runs things, and clearly, anybody who has sat up there, or has been on a board or commission, knows the tremendous input, the tremendous sacrifice, the tremendous decisions that are made on a regular basis by the members of the city council that get no credit for it. And I don't think the residents really appreciate the time and the phone calls, the stopping in the grocery stores, and a lot of the other things that these nine individuals put forth on a regular basis for no pay, but for the betterment of the community. And I think, you know, if you look at Alderman Louie's career, I think it's been about 75 years somehow in the city council or related boards or commissions.
Older than dirt.
Older than dirt. And Alderman Whitman and Grumhouse, a few years younger than Alderman Louie, but certainly no more dedicated, and certainly have put in all the tremendous hours. And so, I know, speaking on behalf of the staff, and I also feel on behalf of the residents, we can't thank you enough for the time that you have given to make Lake Forest a better place to live. And because of that, we do have some wonderful gifts and prizes that I will hand out to you this evening, but also because we're on a tight budget, you know, we'll have to hold off those fancy tricks or something like that, so.
Thank you.
I should say, for those that are waiting for you to unwrap them, you've got to be like a kid at Christmas time, just rip the paper off, let's go. That's right.
There you go.
John, yours is peeling on the side. The Public Works people didn't...
It's reflective.
Oh, okay, good. I thought they gave you a defective one for a moment.
So can we do like you do in Chicago, where they hang up the name, on the Oakdale Street name, and we can really honor these people?
They can display them proudly on their own property.
That's it.
Right. And in addition to that, they each get a tree that will be planted somewhere in the city of Lake Forest, at a location to be determined by them, in honor of their service to the city of Lake Forest. So thank you very much, and congratulations.
Congratulations. Any comments now by the fellow Aldermen that want to take a stab at these fellows as they leave?
When we make a stab?
Go ahead.
I feel like a player on a college football team, where all the experienced guys are about to graduate, and I really, you know, I can't tell you how much I've appreciated your being on the council, and I came on the council, and all the experience you brought to it. David, to have you as our finance chairman during the Great Recession was just amazing luck, and with everything else you've done on the council, that, I think, will go down as your finest hour. Stu, in addition to showing me how a bow tie will make me look dapper and intelligent, you were invaluable help when we founded the Legal Committee in 2006, and you were the liaison with it. You are always very thoughtful and very articulate, I will miss that, whether or not I agree with you, but I will still miss it. And John, it has been wonderful being a fellow fourth ward Alderman with you, because you've lived in Lake Forest so long, you've been in the council so long, you know where all the bodies are buried, and in fact, you put most of them.
Thank you all.
No, I obviously am still a newbie, although fortunately, in about 10 minutes, I won't be anymore, so I feel much better. You know, I will also miss John, his guidance and his tremendous skill with maneuvering the Public Service Committee, and kind of helping our great staff run from this side has been extraordinary. And in a short time I've been on the council, it's been really a, it's been a pleasure and a great experience for me to watch you be involved in that. I will mention, David, you continually amaze me, you're the smartest guy I've seen in politics, quote unquote, so it's time for you to get out. And I can't echo Bob's comments loudly enough, we are so fortunate to have you in the position you're in, and we will very much miss you. My last comment is, Stu, Stu, you and I go back to building review board days, and I can distinctly remember when you were elected Alderman. And I don't know if we ran into each other at the coffee shop or somewhere, and I said, "Stu, so what's it like? What's the time commitment?" And he said, "Oh, it's about the same as a BRB." You lie. But we will miss you as well, and we will miss your great comments and your great thoughts, and we wish you the best.
To all my good friends, and I appreciate the opportunity to first gotten to know you as, as friends, and we don't get a lot in life, and it's very nice to serve with people that end up being your friends, so I say that first. John, your balance of history here in the community, and what that has meant, and the decision, how it helps us make decisions, has been absolutely invaluable. Stu, I, my biggest takeaways from you are always, I hear the words, "It's not just that it makes sense to do it, it's what we ought to be doing." And those ring very true with your command and your sense of ethics, your sense of doing the right thing, and I think it's embodied in what this community's history has been, and that has, I think, made our decisions more rich, and have made them better. And David, certainly, your foresight, you know, you were the first one that identified the pension issue and made it as big a deal as it was. You did that long before we were making trips to Springfield, Bob. David was raising the red flag on that, saying, "We've got a problem here." We saw the economic downturn at the city before it happened, thank you for your leadership on that. And even things like capital budgeting, which we weren't doing with the kind of discipline that is now being attacked on that topic. Those are real contributions that the citizens can be very, very proud of, and that future councils are going to benefit from your work, from all of your work here. So I really, it's an honor to have served with you. We will dearly miss you. I'm not sure your shoes can be filled, but I'm sure we have capable new Aldermen coming in, but your leadership has really been outstanding, so thank you.
Thanks. Since we're going down the line here, I'll jump in. Start out with you, David. Certainly, I don't mean to be redundant, but it's certainly worthwhile to repeat myself here that, you know, we're going to sorely miss you in the finance role, but we know that we still have Kathy here, and she's extremely capable. Your guidance and your perseverance in what we've done in the last few years is amazing. You truly did a great job, we're surely going to miss you, and we thank you for all you've done. I'm going to jump over to John. John, you're my fellow fourth ward Alderman, and I'm going to miss having you up here, having you miss at my side. And I think of all the things, it's true, someone talked about the historian at our board and commission dinner, we had slides that Bob presented to the whole, oh, probably 150 people, and I think the only person that knew every single historical aspect of Lake Forest was John. I mean, if you're going to retire, I think you should be the Lake Forest historian.
I took the pictures.
You took the pictures. All the way back to 1800. But I thank you, and your work on the Public Works Committee has been outstanding. You've done a great job with the whole, especially now with the last work on the beach access road, and I commend you for your work. And Stu, I don't know what I can say, it's, you know, you've brought that touch of class to the council that I'm not sure we'll ever be able to replace. I've looked around, and I think there's only, I'm not even sure, oh, there is one bow tie up here, but I have to go back for a while, so I'm not sure we're ever going to see this look again. So, but your work on the Legal Committee and all the other committees, and your, certainly your dedication to making sure we did the right thing here is, was always very thoughtful, and we thank you for it. So we'll miss you all, and we thank you, and I do know that now you can go back to doing your duties with the family and your carpools and everything else around the house. No more excuses for getting out of that work around the house, so thank you, all of you, very much.
I've only been here a year, and my four kids keep me pretty darn busy, I haven't gotten to know a lot of the people in the council all that well, but I, I think the brains and the spirit and the heart of Dave and John and Stu here is really something that's going to be sorely missed, and not to tie too closely to the Wizard of Oz or anything, but it's a, it's really, again, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I wonder how the council's going to continue at the same level that it is, with all due respect to us and the new people coming on, it seems like there's going to be quite a hole of experience here. But thanks for everything, and, and good luck.
And I hate to go last, and actually, this is maybe a few words that I'm going to say that I'm actually a little frightened to say, because I can't say enough about what the three of you have meant to the council, what you've meant to me during the period of time that I've served with you and got to know you. I think the members of the council are wrong. It's not a question of, "We're going to miss you," but all three of you have created a new bar, an inspiration for future council members to meet. Truly, between the three of you, I can't imagine, again, the work, the effort that's gone into what you've achieved. I've served with David now for three years, and I've known David longer, and the tough part about David, for people that don't know him, is sitting next to him as being the first ward Alderman is actually very easy. It's kind of like playing on the same team as Michael Jordan. If you're on the court, you look great. And sincerely, his intelligence, his sensitivity, his financial knowledge, makes it real easy for me to sit as a councilman and first ward. The one complaint that I've never gotten in any phone call, from the numerous complaints I've gotten from first ward residents, has been questioning the tax levels in Lake Forest, and the financial stability of this town. You can't imagine the complaints we'd get if the finances in Lake Forest were left to chance. He didn't leave them to chance at any point in time, he was thinking ahead of the curve at every moment, and sincerely, his ability, his knowledge, it's overwhelming, and it will be missed, but for those who succeed him, he's kind of shown the way on how to do it, and how to do it the right way. And for the sake of it, I don't think he'll be gone from the council, he'll be helping us for a long time, and, you know, you're a member of the community, we will see you around, and we will hear of you, but again, to surpass is going to be very difficult. John, I've served with you in zoning, so your eight years on council go back further than merely the record that was set for the longest that anyone has ever served in council in Lake Forest, but...
The shortest meetings.
Shortest meeting, which from my, my speech, won't be beaten right now. But similar to David, the amazing part about getting to know you on these years has been truly your heart, your wishes for this community to succeed, to get better, and truly, I don't think anyone loves the city of Lake Forest more than you do. I feel like part of your family at this point, in many ways, and that's something that I'll carry on beyond this meeting today, and I look forward to talking to you many times in the future. I'm going to miss you at the parade, though, but truly, sensitivity-wise, you know, again, it's like watching a family member go away. We'll still obviously be in contact, but appreciate it more than you could imagine. Stu, you are a man of morality, and I didn't serve with you as long as I've known John, or knowing David, but truly, you've lent a morality to the decisions made in the council, and that's something that's balanced a lot of our decisions out of different viewpoints, again, where you can't agree with it every moment, but something that had to have been injected, and something that's been appreciated and driven a lot of important issues in this community. Again, seeing the three of you leave, it's, it's difficult for me, but again, there's a term limit, time moves on, new voices are needed. The three members coming on council truly will lend new voices and new opinions, but you'll be missed. I could go on and on, but, you know, before I, before I start crying, it's been great serving with all three of you. Thank you again. Any other further comments?
They get, they get...
They get their comments, of course.
You get last words.
Robottles.
Robottles.
They're feeding the robottles.
Better time, I may go a little long, but I'll try and, I'll try and be speedy. It's hard for me to believe that I've been on the council now for six years. When I would, when I joined, I was immediately thrown... When I joined, I was immediately thrown into the Costco controversy, and at that time, if you told me I'd still be here in six years, I would have said, no way. But, you know, things settled down, at least for a little while. There would certainly be other challenges, the Barrett Chapel, the pigs, Forest Park, affordable housing, pensions, but we made it through. It wasn't always pretty. Coming from the private sector, I'm not sure you ever get used to the sausage-making, but for the most part, knowing what we did at the time, I think we got it right. Along the way, I've certainly learned a lot and come to understand and appreciate Lake Forest even more, despite the fact that I've lived here all my life. A highlight of my experience was certainly the opportunity to work with the mayor and all of you on the council. You know, you really made this job what it is. In particular, I obviously spent six years with Stu and John. Great respect for both of you, and I think we had a great rapport throughout. You know, I would always know when John was going to make a motion, and I would second it even before he got the word out of his mouth. So, you know, and we had that rapport, and I have great respect for both of you. Certainly, early on, I benefited from two outstanding mentors, former mayor Mike Rumel and former First Ward Alderman Tom Swarthout, two very different personalities, but two people who care immensely about Lake Forest. For the past few years, I've also had a great partner in the First Ward, in Kent. Kent was a good friend of mine before he joined, and my friendship and respect for him has grown in our time on the council together.
Thank you.
He has been a great complement to me, and as most people in the First Ward already discovered, Kent is really the one who gets things done in the ward. So I don't expect much to change for First Ward residents when I leave. I certainly want to thank my wife and my kids for allowing me the opportunity to serve and supporting me when I was missing all those Monday nights of family dinners, homework, and sporting events. And believe me, it was five adolescent kids, four and a half years apart. I have a lot of driving and homework assignments to make up to for my wife. I also want to thank the residents. They put a lot of trust in us to run this city, and I think we all appreciate that. At times, I would love to see the residents get involved more. When all of them in hand or hand left last year, he talked about the importance of volunteering, and I would certainly echo those words. I would also urge the residents just to learn more and weigh in more on key issues. We want your opinions, and these opinions are becoming more important, just not here, but at the state level as well. One thing this job has given me is a lot more insight into Springfield, and all I can say is that as bad as you think things are, you can't imagine what it looks like when you get a little peek inside. The biggest firebomb facing Lake Forest and other municipalities like us is that Springfield is in almost complete control of what we do. If we don't change it, we all risk going down with the mothership. At the same time, I hope the residents will remember that unlike our state officials, the people up sitting up here, no one is paid, we're not full-time representatives. It is always very disheartening to all of us when the level of decorum breaks down in here. We are your neighbors, we are volunteers, we are not conflicted, and most of the time, even if you disagree with us, there is information and logic that lead us to our opinions. I would certainly be remiss if I didn't thank the city's incredible staff. Bob, for six years, I have admired the team you have put in place and the deft way you have managed and communicated. We are extremely lucky to have such a fine city manager. Other staff that has been incredibly helpful to me, and I'm sure I'll leave some people out, so I apologize upfront, Chief Howland Berger, Susan Banks, Duchesne, Ken Magnus, Tom Nats, Mary Van Arsdale, Louise and Diane in Finance, Paul Peterson, Dan Reeves, Rob Carmichael, Joe Mobile, Karina Walters, Mike Silvestri, Lou Decker, Jeff Adams, Ken Leon, Rosemary Hack, Ann Whipple, Beth Marquez, Megan O'Neil, Peter Gordon, and Birdie, and of course, city attorney and singer I hear, Vic Philippine. Remi and Michael Thomas, you two have both been great assets to me, and I'm really excited to watch you grow as you take over your respective areas in the future months. And finally, I can't forget about the two Kathys. You two are incredible people and employees, and I don't know what the city would do without you. Kathy Cerniac, I have so admired your work ethic and the way you capably run Com Dev. I'm also stuck by your incredible poise and patience, two qualities that I don't have. There were many times in here when I wanted to leap through the fence when someone was unfairly criticizing you, and yet you always took it in stride. The bottom line was that you were involved. I always knew that we would get to the right outcome. Kathy Reitner, you made me look awfully good these last five years. Of course, you and I both know that the brains and the work came with you, and I was largely just a figurehead, but I hope the residents truly appreciate what a gem you are. In my finance career, I have worked with a lot of extremely talented finance people, and Kathy is as good as any of them. So Kathy, I thank you, and I will miss working with you. In closing, I would just say that there seems to be a tradition of staff presenting a gift to the aldermen. I always felt like this was backwards, since the staff really does all the work for us. All we do is send the emails and say we need help on this and get them to help us. So in honor of the staff, I have arranged a Mexican buffet lunch at the MS Building on May 13th. This lunch is a very small token of my appreciation for everything the employees have done for me and the rest of the residents over the past six years. So, in closing, I thank you, staff, my fellow aldermen and Mr. Mayor. I know the city staff, the city is in great shape with all of you. Thank you.
Well, the last 10 minutes of comments that I've heard has made it all worthwhile to me. Thinking about what this has been for six years, and of course, five years before that on the building review board, I concluded that it was much like being really a short-term torchbearer. Six years seems like a very long period of time, but the city is now celebrating its 150th anniversary, and six years is a mere 4% of that. During that time, there have been probably over 1,000 older persons here, and my role has just been one small component of that. I think it has been a small role. I do hope that whatever a little bit I've done has made the city better, but I'll leave it up to the residents and the staff and future council people and history to make that determination. All the time that I was on, I, this is a phrase I often use, I tried to call them as I see it. I know that pleased many people. I know that because I've got a lot of thank you calls and emails and whatnot, and I certainly know that I have offended others, and to those I say, I'm sorry, but I can't help it if you don't see things correctly. I certainly didn't do this job, and it was a job. I took it very, very seriously, as those of you around me know. I certainly didn't do it as any kind of popularity contest. I do leave feeling that for the great majority of time, I did the right thing in my own views. I do have many thanks to give. First and foremost, to the Second Ward residents who have entrusted their welfare and the city's welfare to me over these last six years, to the staff just generally for their incredible professionalism and their amazing preparedness. It has been a lesson to me to see how well a group of staff people can function and support without a speed bump along the way. Just an amazing group. Bob, for your leadership, not just here, but on behalf of the residents of the state of Illinois down in Springfield, you've gone above and beyond the call of duty. And I also want to thank, I don't think we should forget it, I want to thank the newspapers, particularly Pioneer Press. I'm not sure if they're here now, but week after week, meeting after meeting, they come here and they report what we do and make us a visible group to the residents, and keeping the residents informed is a very, very important task, and I thank them for sort of being the 10th alderman, if you will, on this group. To the new city council, not just the new members, but the new group, the one word I have for you is be courageous. You know from the six years listening to me, I feel that group think does not lead always to positive change. Press the envelope, do what you think is right. The first time that you say, gee, maybe I won't speak up and say what I really feel because I'm not sure the rest of the people are going to agree with me, you have now entered a decline, because that will happen again and again and again. And I caution you to, don't let that happen. Say what you feel and stand up for what you think is really right. For all the residents who are here and listening and whoever else cares about the city, get involved and give back. It's a wonderful thing to do. What we have here is the purity of democracy at work. I've said that before, I firmly believe it. And it's a wonderful thing for Lake Forest, it's a model for other communities, from the caucus election to elections and to these meetings, it's the best way to do it, and I encourage residents to participate to their max. As many of you know, I am not just leaving the city council. I have moved to the city of Chicago. For the last few meetings, I have not been here because I made a choice that it was best for the actions of the council. If I did not attend, we moved into the city of Chicago in the middle of March, and that is going to be my, that is my new home. But I lived here for 15 years, 11 of which I served the council, the BRB and the city council. And I will always say that I, I will always say proudly that I was a resident of Lake Forest, and I will always say proudly that I was a member of the city council. And to my brethren here, thank you very much for putting up with me and hope to see you down the line somewhere. Thank you.
I'd like to echo everything that's been said, and I don't want to repeat the same thing over, or we'll be here too long, and I'm not into long meetings, but it's truly been a privilege and an honor to serve as an alderman for the city of Lake Forest. I want to thank the three mayors who I served under, on the council, for their leadership, Preschlack and Mike Rumel and our current mayor, Jim, who I also served with, I believe, very successfully when he was representing the Fourth Ward. I've truly enjoyed my years serving both the Fourth Ward residents as well as all the citizens of this wonderful community. And I probably got more phone calls from everybody because they knew where I was and I had a local number to call during the day, and they didn't have to make a toll call to the city. I also want to thank Bob Kylie, who we're lucky to have as our city manager. I've been fortunate over the past years to work as the city council liaison with almost every city department. I want to thank all our dedicated employees for their help in making the city the wonderful place that it is, especially those staff members who I worked with so closely on so many projects and committees. We've accomplished so much over the years. A special thanks to the two Kathys, Ken Magnus, Remi, Tom Nats, Ken Leon, Michael Thomas, Joe Berger, Jeff Howell, Duchesne, Karina, Susan Banks, Mary Van Arsdale, and Peter Gordon, just to name a few. I want to thank the current aldermen and the past aldermen that I served with for their dedication to the job and their training that they gave me when I came on the council. I have great respect for each of these dedicated men and women who have become friends, and they truly have the best interest of the residents in their hearts at all times. I also have to thank my wife and my daughter Eileen for fielding so many calls at my home and office over the years, and especially hearing the same issues over and over whenever we're out. They have become experts on every topic in the city. Those who, of us who are retiring from the council tonight, know we've done our best to make Lake Forest a better place, and we know that we're leaving the council in very good hands. I hope to continue to be involved wherever I can be in our community. Many have asked what I'll do when I'm no longer alderman. The first thing tomorrow morning is moving the city hall phone number from the number one position on my speed dial and replacing it with the Pro Shop. And now, if we don't have anything else, I'd love to adjourn the meeting as my last time as the Fourth Ward Alderman.
I thought you'd never run.
That's David's chat.
Did you already motion?
I made it.
You missed it.
Second favor.
Sleep, and you're gone.
Thank you all.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will start our second meeting momentarily, five minutes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's David's show.
Did you already motion?
I mean, I did.
Second.
Second favor.
Sleep, and you're gone.
Well, thank you all, and...
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. We will start our second meeting momentarily, five minutes? Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's like a wave, there's never...
There was a motion by...
There was a motion and a second to actually do it.
Yeah, I made the motion, I made it very quietly.
We have a second?
Second.
We have all in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Our next on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Ward 2 Alderman, Stu Whitman. And I would like to read that resolution as well. Whereas Stuart Whitman has served the City of Lake Forest as 2nd Ward Alderman from May 2005 to May 2011, and whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Audit Committee, the Chairman and Finance Committee, the Home Rural Committee, Personnel, Compensation and Administration Committee, Municipal Services Committee, Park and Rec Ad Hoc Committee, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees, including leader of the Capital Improvement Plan, early retirement incentive program, the restructuring, the bond planning, budget analysis, financial variance analysis, and water rate analysis. Now, a little note here, David measured his water use every day for a month and found out he does not use that much water. True finance director. On behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to David Grumhouse for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, and shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council. This is adopted by the City Council on this day, May 2, 2011. Congratulations again, David.
It was a motion by...
There was a motion and a second to actually do it.
Yeah, I made the motion, I made it very quietly.
We have a second?
Second.
We have all in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
All right. Our next on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Ward 2 Alderman, Stu Whitman. And I would like to read that resolution as well. Whereas Stuart Whitman has served the City of Lake Forest as 2nd Ward Alderman from May 2005 to May 2011, and whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Building Review Board, Planning and Preservation Committee, Chairman of the Barrow Redevelopment Committee, Laurel Avenue Redevelopment Authority, liaison to the Environmental Policy Committee, liaison to the legal services, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees, and the duties of the City Council, and on behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to Stu Whitman for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, and shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council, May 2, 2011. Congratulations, Stu.
So moved.
Second.
Aye. And Stu just told me that he has a beautiful penthouse condo overlooking Lake Michigan, and that we're welcome to come down there anytime on the weekend, to enjoy the weekends with him. So thank you very much, that's very nice of you. Our next resolution is for appreciation of Ward 4 Alderman, John Louie. Whereas John Louie has served the City of Lake Forest as 4th Ward Alderman from May 2003 to May 2011, I think it was even longer than that, I think this is still wrong, but... Whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Chairman of the Public Works Committee, Municipal Services Project, Western Avenue Project, Snow Operations Plan Updates, South Beach Access Road Reconstruction Project, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees, and the duties of the City Council, and on behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to John Louie for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, and shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council. This is adopted by the City Council on this day, May 2, 2011. Congratulations again, David.
It's like a wave, there's never...
And there was a motion by...
There was a motion and a second to actually do it.
Yeah, I made the motion, I made it very quietly.
We have a second?
Second.
We have all in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Our next on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Ward 2 Alderman, Stu Whitman. And I would like to read that resolution as well. Whereas Stuart Whitman has served the City of Lake Forest as 2nd Ward Alderman from May 2005 to May 2011, and whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Building Review Board, Planning and Preservation Committee, Chairman of the Barrow Redevelopment Committee, Laurel Avenue Redevelopment Authority, liaison to the Environmental Policy Committee, liaison to the legal services, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees, including leader of the Capital Improvement Plan, early retirement incentive program, the restructuring, the bond planning, budget analysis, financial variance analysis, and water rate analysis. Now, a little note here, David measured his water use every day for a month and found out he does not use that much water. True finance director. On behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to David Grumhouse for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, and shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council, May 2, 2011. Congratulations, Stu.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? There we go.
Congratulations, Jim.
We may have to try and out Louie a Louie.
I don't know, Palmer is jumping up to the task here pretty quickly.
It's this magic chair, it's the magic.
All right, I'm going to read it for the record, but I don't know if you have anything else, any comments by city manager?
Only to welcome and congratulate our three new aldermen. Thank you very much for your dedication to the residents and to the community. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Bob.
That completes my report.
Comments by council members? No, not yet. Opportunity for public to address the City Council, anybody from the public this evening? No, we wear you all out, that was good. New business, we have one, authorization to award of contract for the restoration of Waveland Park Tennis Courts, presented by Director of Parks and Recreation, Mary Van Arsdale. Mary?
Mary, this looks like it's under budget, and it looks like it's awarded to the low bidder.
This is the tennis court in the middle of the snowstorm.
Yes, I asked Bob, I said, I noticed we haven't done a lot of PowerPoints tonight, so I won't spend a lot of time on PowerPoints either, but I do have some slides up here if you want me to go through them all or not, so I'll do a couple real quick, but I won't do all of the whole packet you received tonight. Let's see. Basically, we're here to ask for authorization to do a replacement of the tennis courts at Waveland Park, which is in Ward 2. We did go out to bid, we got six companies that bid on the tennis court project, it did come in within our budget, based upon the bonds that were issued by City Council last year, and behalf of looking forward towards some improvements that we need to do at that park. This was some of the court repairs that was in your packet that we've done since 1998. Our courts have been aging, and we've been slowly addressing the courts, either through putting down a new surface and fencing on it, or a complete replacement, and Waveland Park is one that needs a complete replacement. Just, this was a slide I put in there, the park board, what they did a few years ago when we started looking at all these assets was summarizing what was, how we would prioritize what we replaced, and the need for them, and this was that summary chart that was in your packet regarding that. Really what's left at this point is to tackle Waveland. Deer Path is the next worst courts that we have, and South Park is ones, as you know, we've discussed, not replacing unless the community wishes to fundraise for that, or we can get some donations to address that court location. And these are just some pictures, we have cracked sealed these, so if you walk on the courts today, most of these cracks are just shadings, but the crack sealant is sinking back into these cracks, and by the time we get to Tennessee's in this year, you will see these cracks come back. They have completely gone through to the ground surface, similar to what we had at Everett, where we did a complete replacement a year ago on those, and so the grass and everything you can see is actually from the ground coming up with the weeds. So we have complete failure all the way to the subsurface of these tennis courts. These were just some of the fencing pictures. One of the things we looked at with these tennis courts is, did we need four tennis courts at this location still, and what were some potential other interests? We held the Neighborhood Parks Open House this last fall, and out of that was a suggestion that we consider adding a basketball court at one of our park locations in the Waveland, parents in particular expressed some interest in that. So one of the things we did was, been an alternate option, to make one of the courts color-coded to be a basketball court, and we would put standards on that court that we can later, they wouldn't be mounted into the asphalt, they'd be a standing court that's heavily weighted, so there are not, you know, any issues with safety with that, but we could move those off the courts and turn it back into a tennis court in the future, should tennis trends change. This is just giving example how the courts would be laid out, we did talk to the resident that was closest to these tennis courts, and she was very amenable and liked the concept of adding a basketball court there versus just the three tennis courts. But this is a summary of the bids, as I mentioned, we had six companies that bid. We... I state your name.
I, James Cowie Jr.
Having been elected to the Office of Mayor...
Having been elected to the Office of Mayor...
Of the City of Lake Forest...
Of the City of Lake Forest...
In the County of Lake...
In the County of Lake...
And State of Illinois...
And the State of Illinois...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will discharge the duties of said office...
And I will discharge the duties of said office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the four new aldermen. We're going to do all ones.
There are four.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Three new, one old.
Talking about being sworn in for a while, yeah.
Exactly.
Congratulations. Oh, you're moving over.
You got a new seatmate over there on the right.
When I say state your name, please state your names.
No, you're...
Raise your hand, repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, I, William General.
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman...
Having been elected to the Office of Alderman...
Of the City of Lake Forest...
Of the City of Lake Forest...
In the County of Lake...
In the County of Lake...
And State of Illinois...
And the State of Illinois...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will discharge the duties of said office...
And I will discharge the duties of said office...
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bertie. We need to take a roll call, please.
Okay. Honorable James Cowie...
Here.
Alderman Novit...
Here.
Alderman Waldeck...
Here.
Alderman Moore...
Here.
Alderman Panda Leon...
Here.
Alderman Marsh...
Here.
Alderman Schoenheimer...
Here.
Alderman Palmer...
Here.
Alderman Edelman...
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Bertie. I just want to say, congratulations to the three new aldermen. I don't think you know what you got yourselves into yet, but we're happy to work with you. Our first order of business is the election and appointment of city officers, the first being election by the City Council as required by charter and city code. We have City Treasurer, Kathy Reinerson, City Supervisor, Bob Kiley, City Marshal and Collector, Joseph Berger, City Attorney, Victor Philippini, City Clerk, Robert Kiley, City Surveyor and Engineer, Ramesh Kanapardi. I look for a recommendation action as to appoint the officers as required by the City Charter and City Code.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, next order of business is reports of city officers, first being comments by mayor, and I'm just going to make just a very, very too simple comments as far as for the new folks coming on board, and all I ask is two things, number one, no personal agendas, number two, we're here to serve and help our community. I think if you leave those two little things simple as is that, we're going to have a great time together, and I believe, look forward to working with each and every one of you. We have a number of 2011 and 2012 newborn commission appointments, and I will read these just quickly, just for the record and probably for the public, but we have the Building Review Board, we have Michael Black, there's an appointment to the 4th Ward, Peggy Bignokci, appointment chairman for the 2nd Ward. From Croya, we have Rebecca Quackenbush, appointment from Lake Bluff, Historic Preservation Commission, Susan Athanson, appointment from the 3rd Ward. Library Board, we have Debbie Block, Lynn Casper, Robert Nappier, and Jennifer Poth, those are both 432 and a student liaison. Plant Commission, James Caris and Lloyd Culbertson, Boards 1 and 4. Zoning Board of Appeals, Richard Kristoff, Robert Frankson, Rosemary Kerr, Boards 4, 1 and 1. Recommended action is to approve these appointments.
Motion to approve appointments as stated. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have, next, fun stuff here, and I know our alderman didn't leave, right? The ex-alderman. We have Resolutions of Appreciation for the 1st World Alderman, David Grumhouse, and I would like to read into the record. Whereas David Grumhouse, 1st World Alderman, from May 2005 to May 2011, whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Audit Committee, the Chairman and Finance Committee, the Home Rural Committee, Personnel, Compensation and Administration Committee, Municipal Services Committee, Park and Rec Ad Hoc Committee, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees, including leader of the Capital Improvement Plan, early retirement incentive program, the restructuring, the bond planning, budget analysis, financial variance analysis, and water rate analysis. A little note here, David measured his water use every day for a month and found out he does not use that much water. True finance director. On behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to David Grumhouse for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, and shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council. This is adopted by the City Council on this day, May 2, 2011. Congratulations again, David.
It's like a wave, there's never...
And there was a motion by...
There was a motion and a second to actually do it.
Yeah, I made the motion, I made it very quietly. We have a second?
Second.
We have all in favor?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Our next on the agenda is a resolution of appreciation for Ward 2 Alderman, Stu Whitman. And I would like to read that resolution as well. Whereas Stuart Whitman has served the City of Lake Forest as 2nd Ward Alderman from May 2005 to May 2011, and whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Building Review Board, Planning and Preservation Committee, Chairman of the Barrow Redevelopment Committee, Laurel Avenue Redevelopment Authority, liaison to the Environmental Policy Committee, liaison to the legal services, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees, and the duties of the City Council, and on behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to Stu Whitman for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, which shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council, this day, May 2, 2011. Congratulations, Stu.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? There we go.
Congratulations, Jim.
We may have to try and out Louie a Louie.
I don't know, Palmer is jumping up to the task here pretty quickly.
It's this magic chair, it's the magic.
All right, I'm going to read it for the record, but I don't know if you have anything else, any comments by city manager?
Only to welcome and congratulate our three new aldermen. Thank you very much for your dedication to the residents and to the community. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Bob.
That completes my report.
Comments by council members? No, not yet. Opportunity for public to address the City Council, anybody from the public this evening? No, we wear you all out, that was good. New business, we have one, authorization to award of contract for the restoration of Waveland Park Tennis Courts, presented by Director of Parks and Recreation, Mary Van Arsdale. Mary?
Mary, this looks like it's under budget, and it looks like it's awarded to the low bidder.
This is the tennis court in the middle of the snowstorm.
Yes, I asked Bob, I said, I noticed we haven't done a lot of PowerPoints tonight, so I won't spend a lot of time on PowerPoints either, but I do have some things, slides up here if you want me to go through them all or not, so I'll do a couple real quick, but I won't do all of the whole packet you received tonight. Let's see. Basically, we're here to ask for authorization to do a replacement of the tennis courts at Waveland Park, which is in Ward 2. We did go out to bid, we got six companies that bid on the tennis court project, it is, did come in within our budget, based upon the bonds that were issued by City Council last year, and behalf of looking forward towards some improvements that we need to do at that park. This was some of the court repairs that was in your packet that we've done since 1998. Our courts have been aging, and we've been slowly addressing the courts, either through laying, putting down a new surface and fencing on it, or a complete replacement, and Waveland Park is one that needs a complete replacement. Just, this was a slide I put in there, the park board, what they did a few years ago when we started looking at all these assets was summarizing what was, how we would prioritize what we replaced, and the need for them, and this was that summary chart that was in your packet regarding that. Really what's left at this point is to tackle Waveland. Deer Path is the next worst courts that we have, and South Park is ones, as you know, we've discussed, not replacing unless the community wishes to fundraise for that, or we can get some donations to address that court location. And these are just some pictures, we have cracked sealed these, so if you walk on the courts today, most of these cracks are just shadings, but the crack sealant is sinking back into these cracks, and by the time we get to Tennessee's in this year, you will see these cracks come back. They have completely gone through to the ground surface, similar to what we had at Everett, where we did a complete replacement a year ago on those, and so the grass and everything you can see is actually from the ground coming up with the weeds. So we have complete failure all the way to the subsurface of these tennis courts. These were just some of the fencing pictures. One of the things we looked at with these tennis courts is, did we need four tennis courts at this location still, and what were some potential other interests? We held the Neighborhood Parks Open House this last fall, and out of that was a suggestion that we consider adding a basketball court at one of our park locations in the Waveland, parents in particular expressed some interest in that. So one of the things we did was, been an alternate option, to make one of the courts color-coded to be a basketball court, and we would put standards on that court that we can later, they wouldn't be mounted into the asphalt, they'd be a standing court that's heavily weighted, so there are not, you know, any issues with safety with that, but we could move those off the courts and turn it back into a tennis court in the future, should tennis trends change. This is just giving example how the courts would be laid out, we did talk to the resident that was closest to these tennis courts, and she was very amiable and liked the concept of adding a basketball court there versus just the three tennis courts. But this is a summary of the bids, as I mentioned, we had six companies that bid.
Aye.
And Stu just told me that he has a beautiful penthouse condo overlooking Lake Michigan, and that we're welcome to come down there anytime on the weekend to enjoy the weekends with him. So thank you very much. That's very nice of you. Our next resolution is for appreciation of Ward Four Alderman, John Looby. Whereas John Looby has served the City of Lake Forest as Fourth Ward Alderman from May 2003 to May 2011. I think it was even longer than that. I think this is still wrong, but... Whereas during his term of office, he served as a member of the City Council, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Chairman of the Public Works Committee, Municipal Services Project, Western Avenue Project, Snow Operations Plan Updates, South Beach Access Road Reconstruction Project, and whereas he has devoted much valuable time and personal attention to the work of these committees and the duties of the City Council, and on behalf of the citizens of Lake Forest, continually met his responsibilities with purpose and dedication, and whereas the citizens of Lake Forest, recognize and are deeply appreciative of the valuable time and service contributed to the preservation and improvement of the quality of life in our community, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, Illinois hereby expresses the profound gratitude of the citizens of Lake Forest to John Looby for the loyal and faithful public service he has given by means of this resolution, which shall be spread upon the permanent records of the City Council this day, May 2, 2011. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? There we go. Congratulations, Jim. I don't know, Palmer is jumping up to the task here pretty quickly.
It's supposed to be a four-four thing.
Yeah, it is. It's this magic chair. It's the magic. All right, I'm going to read it for the record, but I don't know if you have anything else. Any comments by City Manager?
Only to welcome and congratulate our three new Aldermen. Thank you very much for your dedication to the residents and to the community. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Bob.
That completes my report.
Comments by Council members? No? Not yet. Opportunity for public to address the City Council. Anybody from the public to see me? No, we wear you all out. That was good. New business, we have one, Authorization to Award of Contract for the Restoration of Waveland Park Tennis Courts, presented by Director of Parks and Recreation, Mary Van Oersdale. Mary?
Mary, this looks like it's under budget, and it looks like it's awarded to the low bidder.
This is the tennis court in the middle of the snowstorm.
Yes, I asked Bob, I said, I noticed we haven't done a lot of PowerPoints tonight, so I won't spend a lot of time on PowerPoints either, but I do have some things, slides up here if you want me to go through them all or not. So I'll do a couple real quick, but I won't do all of the whole packet that you received tonight. Let's see. Basically, we're here to ask for authorization to do a replacement of the tennis courts at Waveland Park, which is in Ward Two. We did go out to bid, we got six companies that bid on the tennis court project. It is, did come in within our budget based upon the bonds that were issued by City Council last year in behalf of looking forward towards some improvements that we need to do at that park. This was some of the court repairs that was in your packet that we've done since 1998. Our courts have been aging, and we've been slowly addressing the courts either through laying, putting down a new surface and fencing on it, or a complete replacement, and Waveland Park is one that needs a complete replacement. Just, this was a slide I put in there, the Park Board, what they did a few years ago when we started looking at all these assets was summarizing what was, how we would prioritize what we replaced and the need for them, and this was that summary chart that was in your packet regarding that. Really what's left at this point is to tackle Waveland. Deer Path is the next worst courts that we have, and South Park is ones, as you know, we've discussed, not replacing unless the community wishes to fundraise for that, or we can get some donations to address that court location. And these are just some pictures. We have cracked sealed these, so if you walk on the courts today, most of these cracks are just shadings, but the crack sealing is sinking back into these cracks, and by the time we get to Tennessee's in this year, you will see these cracks come back. They have completely gone through to the ground surface, similar to what we had at Everett, where we did a complete replacement a year ago on those. And so the grass and everything you can see is actually from the ground coming up with the weeds. So we have complete failure all the way to the subsurface of these tennis courts. These were just some of the fencing pictures. One of the things we looked at with these tennis courts is, did we need four tennis courts at this location still, and what were some potential other interests? We held the Neighborhood Parks Open House this last fall, and out of that was a suggestion that we consider adding a basketball court at one of our park locations in the Waveland. Parents in particular expressed some interest in that. So one of the things we did was, been an alternate option to make one of the courts color-coded to be a basketball court, and we would put standards on that court that we can later, they wouldn't be mounted into the asphalt, they'd be a standing court that's heavily weighted, so there are not, you know, any issues with safety with that. We could move those off the courts and turn it back into a tennis court in the future should tennis trends change. This is just giving example how the courts would be laid out. We did talk to the resident that was closest to these tennis courts, and she was very amenable and liked the concept of adding a basketball court there versus just the three tennis courts. But this is a summary of the bids. As I mentioned, we had six companies that bid. We bid the base amount, which was doing the four courts as tennis courts, and then we did the alternate, which was to color coat the one court into a basketball court, and add the fencing that would separate the three tennis courts from the basketball court. And the total bid, low bid came in by Olson Brothers at $122,691, and Olson Brothers has done a lot of our crack sealing the last few years, and they were also the contractor that did Northcroft Tennis Courts, which we've been very pleased with. They've been, you know, holding up extremely well. So they do have a good reputation, and we do have experience working with them as well. And then the funding source for this, as I mentioned, there were $200,000 in general obligation bonds as part of the capital improvement program that was issued last year on behalf of Waveland Enhancements. The balance of this would go towards the upcoming playground replacement project that we also have funds in the Park and Public Land Fund to help put the two together to get both projects accomplished. So that was our funding source, and tonight what I'm here is requesting authorization to move forward with awarding a contract to Olson Brothers Surfaces Inc. for the replacement of the four courts for a total of $117,366, with an option to implement the alternate bid of the $5,325 to color coat and fence one of the courts to create a basketball service based upon further support we get from the May 2011 Waveland Park Neighborhood Meeting. We will be having a meeting to share the playground plans, to give them an update on the tennis court situation, and what the Council's direction is on that, as well as the resurfacing of the parking lot, which will also be on the docket here for this fall. So we'd like to get some more feedback from the neighborhood at that time when we have those neighborhood meetings, which has been pretty much our typical practice, especially when we do the playground replacements, because parents get very involved with that. So that is requested action tonight before you. Is there any questions I can answer?
Do these courts last as long as they're supposed to?
Yeah, they, they, there's especially new technology, and the new color coding has really helped seal the courts much better. There is approximately a 30-year life expectancy now in the courts. So we are in this unique bubble that I was, have been the issue, you know, financially for a struggle for us, because we've had so many of our courts age about the same time. So hopefully, we're going to be able to, you know, stagger those going forward, and also do, I think, the one thing you do have to do periodically, you know, probably every five to seven years, is re-topcoat the surface coat and reseal it a little bit, and that helps protect those courts from further damage issues, so.
Are these just at the end of their useful life, or have they, could they have been maintained more thoroughly over the years to get more light out of them?
These are, I'm sorry, was the question, are these at the end of their useful life? Yes.
Naturally, or is it because maybe there've been some maintenance shortages along the way?
We have not probably stayed up on top with as maintenance as much in the prior years, because I think crack sealing could have been done a little bit more frequently before they got as bad. However, these courts are extremely old, and, you know, we are seeing that failure all the way down to the ground surface in this location.
How will you decide whether to put the basketball courts in? Will it just be, you know, by how much noise there is at the meeting, one way or the other, or?
Yeah, basically, we'd like to get the feedback. We did take this to the Park Board, and we had the public meeting in April 12th, and since then, I have had some parents who've called me, have been very excited about it and expressed interest in it. I think I have about 16 families already from the neighborhood who've sent and expressed support for a basketball court. So we're starting to see that. We have very little, as you saw in your packet, other than the one court at Deer Path Middle School, we don't have a full-size basketball court, outdoor recreational amenity right now. We just have some half-court or backboards, you know, currently in our park. So it would be a nice new amenity, especially for middle school and up ages that are looking for those kinds of outdoor recreation.
Are these courts illuminated?
I'm sorry?
Are they illuminated?
No, they're not.
And Mary, if, if we approve, when do you anticipate the construction work would start and be completed?
We'd like to start at May 15th, so very short, very quickly here, because we'd like to get the project done by mid-June, so that our leagues that we have planned there and some of our lessons can still start up as necessary for summer. If we end up with rain delays, we do have Everett Courts to fall back on as an alternate location just to get us by in the interim weeks, so.
But we will get the bulk of the summer season.
Yeah, we're trying to get them up for the, for the summer season, for sure.
And the loss of the fourth court doesn't impact that?
It doesn't. Our tennis program size right now, we can still accommodate everything. The other thing I would mention to you, we're also trying to sequence this, because we'd like to get the tennis courts done, then we would do the playground, and the very last thing would be the asphalt for the parking lot. So by fall, that park's improvements would all be in place.
If someone in Lake Forest, perhaps a professional basketball player, would like to personally fund the cost of doing a basketball court, would we consider allowing him to do that, maybe putting a plaque and memorializing it?
Actually, yes, that would be, that is a policy that's going to be coming forward to City Council soon. It's our naming rights policy. We've been working on that. Bob and I held a meeting with a number of city foundations and other organizations in town to get some feedback on this draft policy that we've been preparing. The Park Board has already approved the policy, and we'll be bringing that to you in the next week or so, but that is some, an intent that we would certainly like to pursue if there's an interest.
I think that'd be nice. How do we publicize this?
The, don't, the doc...
The name.
The naming, the naming rights, the naming rights policy?
Well, it's coming up at a future meeting, and we'll have to approve the policy first. So we can't get the money yet. We did have the one case, if you recall, on the park that we discussed, the anonymous gift, which we really like in Lake Forest. Anonymous gifts, we love.
Well, if your last name's anonymous.
Any other questions for Mary?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panda Leon.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
Aye.
AEA's no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Mary. Our next item under new business is a consideration of requests for temporary special use permits to authorize two farmers' markets for the 2011 summer season. This is a first reading and, if desired by the City Council, final approval of each ordinance, presented by Susan Kelsey, Economic Development Coordinator, and Scott Bartlett, Assistant Vice President, Facility Services of Trustmark. Welcome, Susan and Scott.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. We are here to talk about the consideration request for a temporary permit. Both of us are working on a farmer's market. It's a one-year pilot program. The city's program, the farmer's market starts June 18th. It runs for 15 Saturdays, right behind City Hall here in the parking lot. Starts at 7:00 in the morning, ends at 12:00. We have about, we're at maximum capacity, 25 vendors. We have a number on the waiting list, and looking forward to an exciting market. We've set a number of metrics in place that we want to measure and see how we're doing, you know, throughout the market and at the end of the market. And we've been working with the attorney, we have all the insurance coverage, we have Illinois sales tax forms filed, and looking forward to exciting markets. So I'll let Scott talk about his market.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much for considering these temporary special use permits. Ours will be just a smaller market. We won't have 25 vendors. We're going to limit it up to 15, the ordinance says. We have five to six at this time. It will be held on Trustmark property. We have plenty of parking, plenty of paved space for it. Ours is primarily for the, as an amenity to the employees in the park. It will be only advertised in the businesses, but we will, if word spreads and the city residents would like to come down on Thursday, ours are Thursdays from 11:00 till 6:00 at night. We have a couple vendors that want to stay till 6:00. We said that's fine, they want to catch the after-work crowd. But if the city resident would like to come down, we have no problem with that. I think it'd be great, you know, and if we, if we grow, and we want to keep it manageable, but who knows where this will go with both of them, so, thank you very much.
We'd be happy to answer any questions. The recommendation is to waive first reading and grant final approval of ordinance granting approval of temporary special use permit authorizing the operation of a farmer's market in the city and the one here at Conway Park.
Can we afford giving up all these parking spaces?
The one here behind City Hall?
Right.
We're only taking a third of the lot.
Well, I mean, it's a lot of parking spaces.
Yeah, and it's Saturday morning, most of the stores open at 10:00. So we've accommodated the handicap parking, we've moved it over.
What it will do, Alderman, is primarily the City Hall lot is the first one to fill up, and then the one with the Forest Avenue lot, it sort of moves up. So there is plenty of available parking further north. So really, all this will do is during this short period of time is have people park a little further north, but it should be fine. We also, the Oakwood lot tends to be very open on a Saturday as well.
Well, you would know, because you're down there.
I do, yeah.
And could we take these as a pair? I'd like to move to waive first reading for both ordinances at this point.
We, we need a voice vote for the, for the first one and a roll call for the second, so. Yeah, okay.
I'll second, I'll second the motion to waive first reading.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, and then?
Motion to approve both ordinances.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, please.
Second.
I'm trying to keep it moving here.
I guess, I mean, Donald Looby's going.
I know, well, someone's got to do it.
Okay. Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Panda Leon.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Edelman.
That is a tongue twister.
It is, and I'm going to get it. AEA's no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda is simply a chart showing our meetings coming up for the next year, and this is a schedule of regular meetings for the City Council for the fiscal year of 2011 to 2012. I'm looking for a motion for approval of... So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
Well, hold on, I got something yet before you do that. I just have, I would like to announce the, the City Council Standing Committees. I'll read these real quick, I'll also pass them out. Finance, George Panda Leon, Chairman, all Aldermen are on that committee. Personnel, Compensation, Administration is myself, Tom Morse, George Panda Leon. Public Works Chairman is Kent Novit, Tom Morse, David Moore, and Catherine Waldeck. Property and Public Lands, which will be a new committee, which I'll also pass out the resolution, and we'll, we'll grab that in another night, I assume, but I'll pass it out for review this evening. That's Chairman Don Schoenhyder, Kent Novit, and Mike Edelman. City Council Liaisons is Business and Commerce, Michael Edelman. Finance, George Panda Leon. Legal Services, Bob Palmer. Parks and Rec, Catherine Waldeck. Planning and Preservation, Don Schoenhyder. Public Safety, Tom Morse. Public Works, Kent Novit. Youth Services, David Moore. Audit Committee, George Panda Leon. Housing Trust, Tom Morse. Senior Services, Kent Novit. Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, myself. Lake Forest Trust, former Mayor Mike Rumel. And Cultural Quarter Task Force, Kent Novit. And I will pass these out for your ratification. And the other one I'll just hand to you this evening is the Resolution Establishing a Property and Public Lands Committee. Again, we'll bring this up at another meeting, but for your information, we'll pass that out and have you take a look at it. With that...
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Okay. Hey.